Before we get started, let's do some introductions so we can kind of know everybody. We don't want to miss some of these faces around here. I'm Donovan Blackman. I'm the city manager for the city of Pikeville. And I'm going to explain just a little bit here in a few minutes why you're here. You're getting ready to serve something that's never happened as far as I know in the city that this commission wanted to do. And I'll get a little bit more in-depth about what you're here for and why it's important for the entire community and you and those that you're going to represent. But before we do that, so we can kind of get to know each other a little bit, because we're going to be working together over the next couple of months with this project. So I want to start here with Jimmy. If you would, just go around and introduce yourself a little bit.
Jimmy Carter, city commissioner and acting mayor at this time.
Jose Madison.
Gene Davis, city commissioner.
Brad Jane, city commissioner.
Dallas Lane, city commissioner.
Here we go.
I'm Matt Hall, junior class president.
I'm Delaney Hackney and I'm the junior class sergeant at arms.
What was your name again?
Delaney Hackney.
Delaney Hackney.
I'm Jenna Bartley and I'm the senior class president.
I'm Wendy Smith and I'm the senior representative for our, is Frankie treasurer?
Yeah.
For our treasurer Frankie Dodd here who couldn't be here today.
Our secretary.
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 I'm Dalton Stanley and I'm a junior sergeant of arms.
I'm Krishnan Masidi and I'm also representing junior class for someone for the year today.
I'm Fallon Smith and I'm the senior sergeant of arms.
I'm Jessica Branham. I'm the senior class vice president.
I'm Adam Taylor. I'm the senior sergeant of arms.
Okay, well, great. Congratulations for being selected. I guess it's congratulations.
We'll see.
We'll wait until we get to this presentation to see. Before, and what the purpose of the meeting today was, was just kind of get to know all of you on it and kind of explain a little bit about what the city commission's vision is and how you're going to play a role in that. He wants to make sure he gets your face. The, the, and the mayor Frank Justice, let me say this to Frankie, the mayor, his mother has been very sick and he was unfortunately unable to attend today. He's been out for the last month and a half attending to his mother's illness. And hopefully, I just spoke with him yesterday, and his mother's doing much better and hopefully he'll be back in his chair here in about the next week or two. So with all that said, I'm going to go through a presentation, I'm going to try to go through some of the slides real quick, the ones that really matter, the first three or four, to kind of explain what's going on. Pursuant to the Kentucky law, KRS, a city, a city of a fourth-class or greater is required to do what is called a comprehensive plan. And what a comprehensive plan is, is again, just what it sounds like. It's a plan for the city of Pikeville to sit down and look at the future, what we need to do and where we need to go over the next five to 10 years. Again, normally you do one every, every five years. Our, the one that we done was in June, I'm sorry, April 2005 is when it was released. It, there was about 220 tasks for the commission to look at on that plan. And it covers everything from where to put buildings to where, how to annex additional territory in the city, to educational issues, to parks and entertainment. It's all across the board. And again, it's the vision and the plan of where we need to get to for the growth and prosperity of our community, okay? Currently, there was 220 tasks that was adopted by this commission. About 95% of those have been addressed, about 85% were completed, and there's still some ongoing projects. For example, one of the things, I'll just pick it out as a, as a highlight, is that the commission is pursuing, for example, commercial air service, to bring the airport here, to bring actually commercial air service, so that we can open ourselves up to the rest of the world and the rest of the country for economic development. So that's something that will be continually ongoing. There's some other components in place that we still have to put part A, part B, part C down the road. So it may be something that isn't just a decision, it may take three or four or five years to get to where we're trying to go to, okay? Now, the reason that you're here is fairly simple, is this is the first time in our nation's history to where you have four generations working side by side in the employment, in the workforce, okay? And there's reasons behind that, that the scholars will tell you. You've got the traditionalist, and if you look at the composite of myself as the city manager and the four commissioners that are represented here, you've got two of the commissioners that are in the traditionalist age group, okay? That's Gene and Dallas. You've got Barry and Jimmy that are in the baby boomers. You've got, you've got myself, who's in the generation X.
But he's not far from a baby.
No, I'm, I'm one year removed, so don't let, yeah, anyway. Then you've got you all that are sitting around the table that are in generation Y. Now, when you look at this, when you look at the different generational gaps, the reason that, again, the, the experts will tell you that we're working side by side, a lot of it is because, A, one, is that our population is aging longer, and because they're aging longer, our healthcare, they're able to stay in the workforce much longer than they did before. The other component of this is, is that you have the economy. The economy kind of went belly-up a couple of years ago, so those that would have retired have had to stay in the workforce, so they're standing side by side still for benefits like insurance and still being able to pay their bills. So what you have is, again, is traditionalists, which most of that age group, not all, they may have not have retired, are still in the workforce, but they're not kind of in the management role. They're, they're, again, working for insurance, working for those other components. You've got, again, the baby boomers and the generation X, that are traditionally your middle management people. Those are a lot of the people, such as this whole group, that are, that are kind of governing the laws, creating the policies, and making things happen within the community. And then you have the generation Y, which is the group that are coming up through the ladder, that are entering the workforce, that are looking at things like technology that maybe the baby boomers and the traditionalists may not understand. And if you look at, again, statistics and studies, the top 10 jobs in the world right now, especially in the United States, didn't exist in 2004. So if you look how quickly that we're growing, and a lot of that evolves around technology, okay? And again, it's important for us to understand where we're going by giving a voice to everybody in the community. So when you look at the comprehensive plan, and again, the saying is, is from the commission, is "Y" is why you're here, because you all are the Y generation. So what I want to do, I want to go through real quickly, because there's about 40 slides here, and I'm going to go real, real fast, to show you some of the projects that you have seen over the last five, six years that have taken place, that were, that came out of the city's comprehensive plan, or part of the city's comprehensive plan. And then we'll talk a little bit towards the end about major developments that's going on, again, a lot due to the comprehensive plan. And then we're going to come back and tell you what your role is going to be, okay? And again, we talk about the youth. The city commission, over the past several years, put a lot of emphasis on the youth in our community. But again, they're making a lot of decisions for you because they have it per se across the nation. They traditionally don't do what we're doing today, invite these generations in to sit down and have a part in the discussion as a part of the comprehensive plan. So when you look at our youth, and of course, this was recently, we just had both the girls and the boys soccer programs here to the city hall, awarding them proclamations for the great accomplishment. But we've, the commission has invited, this is about the ninth or 10th group that they've had here this year alone, giving different accolades or awards to. So it's important not only to invite them up, but again, to hear from your group, your age, your, your generation, to hear what you see as, what needs to be the plan moving forward. Again, I'm going to go real quickly. These are just some projects that came out of the comprehensive plan. A multi-use trail, the Bob Amis improvement with the sidewalk, the visitor's center, the resurfacing of the track, the basketball courts, RV park soccer, billion-dollar soccer complex, the Hibbler Christmas in July special needs park, you can't see the concession stand, there's a special needs park. Additional playgrounds to get kids outdoors and involved. The new shelters that they constructed, again, offering kayaking and canoeing on the river trail system. Shelt, various shelters throughout the city. The new overlook cage, the Pay Lake with fishing. The pond, the Pikeville Pond was cleaned up and new pumps and radiation was put in. You didn't see the swinging bridge was reconditioned. Again, new boat ramps and new play centers. The football field, the Hamley Complex was re-turfed and a lot of different improvements, such as the concrete underground, the scoreboards, the lighting system, new bleachers, the fence, everything from fence to time clocks. The rural softball complex. The city park went through about a $3 million renovation. That's what it looked like as it was going through with all the new gazebo's and the new playground sets and the pedestrian walkway, the new bricks, the new patio furniture, and the new playgrounds. The expo center was a major part and came on in 2005 and was about to go financially under before the city commission stepped in with a plan to save it and took it over. We've done little things with the police department, concentrating on the kids, offering small little projects such as Sparky the Fire God, paddle boats on the paddle, canoeing and kayaking, river access points. The tennis courts were reconditioned, the tennis courts added, as you see. We even went into a, the issue of recycling that actually came out of Pikeville High School a couple of years ago. We applied for various grants and brought the recycling containers and programs in. This channel, government channel 99, was a big part of that. Ongoing developments right now that if you, if you read the paper, read the press, recently there's been a rash of major developments that's going on that's going to forever change the face of the city of Pikeville. One is a major retail development, which is located on the flat piece of property behind Walmart. And for people of your generation, one of the things that the commission wanted to look at was what type of stores do we need to look at a developer to bring in, so that you don't have to go to Lexington or Louisville, or move away, have these type of experiences, all the things that you see right now. So this is a major $35 million development that will create about 400 to 600 new jobs, and a lot of the brand names that you have to go to Lexington, Louisville to shop at will be part of this development. Of course, the Pikeville Medical Center, the commission was involved in the bonding, helping the medical center get the, the funding in order to build the new project. The project, the new judicial center that's under construction. The Hampton Inn and doing feasibility studies and working towards bringing in lodgings in downtown. And of course, there's a new Hilton Garden Inn that's being constructed. You see the construction going on right now, which will look like this when it's completed. The medical school, which is known as the Cole Building, was just opened. This is a new project that will start in December, which is a new scholar house, which again, caters to kids in the school systems that went through an unplanned pregnancy and had a child, and again, statistically showing that somebody coming out of high school that has a child typically doesn't go on to further their career. So this is a major project that we're partnering with the county on to bring through this community that will start in this December. We just did a groundbreaking on. The new Jenny Wiley Theater, which part of our workings with them was not only to build a theater, a full-time professional theater downtown, but also they're required under the contract the commission exercised with the theater to do mobile workshops with Pikeville High School and the county school system, so that your age generation can get involved in the arts and cultural aspect of the community. So they're tied to both the university, the technical college, and the high schools in the area. There's a new horse trail with the new riding stalls and such that it will be construction next month that will be up at Bob Amis Park, and that's kind of the way that the trail is going to go up at the park with an overhead shot. And as I mentioned earlier, commercial air service, which we're getting ready to do a press release tomorrow with a major announcement towards those initiatives. And this is something that I've worked at the direction of this commission on for the last five years. So again, I went through that really quickly, and the reason I wanted to do that is I could, I could literally stand up here all day and show you all the progress and all the things that have happened by the will of the commission. But it's not just the will, it's because we had good planning in place. The one component that I didn't really mention up there, and what I keep saying is, is that this commission made this decision, and this commission made this decision, this commission made this decision. And they make the decision of the best information that is provided to them. People that come forth, behind you, Mary, Miriam Silman, I'm sorry, Mary, I'm tongue-tied, is, she just came in. Miriam is actually the organizational company that did the city's last comprehensive plan. The city has received funding, we received a grant, and then the city will use some money out of the general fund, and we will do a revised comprehensive plan that is scheduled to be released sometime next year. So what Miriam's job will be, is that she will be going out in the community and looking at different, different factions of businesses. She'll talk to the banking community, the arts community, she'll talk to the hospital, medical, she'll talk to the legal profession. She's got a list of literally 50 to 100 of different organizations and people that she will go out and do fact-finding. Talk about what do you need to get from point A to point B? Where's your growth opportunity from? What do you see that this community needs in order to help you? She and I sat down about a month ago, I guess, Miriam, up in my office, my office is in the city park, and we sat, we talked about all the people we needed to, to talk to. And then she went to work. And then the commission grabbed my ear and said, you know, there's one group that we've left out, and that's your group. And your group, again, historically, and I, I'm on the executive board for the Kentucky League of Cities. The state of Kentucky has about 420 cities throughout the entire state out of 120 counties. The Kentucky League of Cities represents about 385 of those cities. And according to the KLC, again, nobody has sat down and has done what we're talking about doing today, because sometimes your generation gets a doubt because you're not in the workforce, you're not seeing on a daily basis. You're typically in school or after school, you're after, after school jobs. So the commission instructed me to contact Mr. Green, because they want you to be part of this process. What's happening typically to a lot of rural communities is that our best and our brightest, like yourselves, and you were hand-selected, your group was hand-selected to come in and sit down with this group to discuss. But what typically happens is our best and our brightest goes through a process called brain brain. Brain brain. I told you, I'm tongue-tied, it's been a long day, a long weekend. And what happens is, is that your group ends up going on to college, and you get reinvested in another community, and you end up maybe staying in that community because of lack of work, a lack of job, a lack of entertainment, a lack of the arts, a lack of all the things that, that you have maybe moved to another community to find. The commission's responsibility is to address those concerns, okay? To look at the entire sector and say, what do we need to invest in, and where do we need to go in order to make sure that we don't lose our best and our brightest? To make sure that they understand that there is a sense of, of their voice being heard because, you know, for example, a lot of the commission, or not just the commission, a lot of this, this generation gap doesn't use the computer and doesn't use iPhones like your group does. This has become part of your identity. So something as simple as bringing broadband internet, Wi-Fi, fiber optics into the downtown area, we may not think of. It wasn't important to us during our generation. But I've got a son that's in your generation, and he works for the hospital, he's an IT manager, and that's all he wants to talk about, is why can't we have this, why can't we have that? Commissioner Cheney's in the same boat. He's got a son that basically went through the same process. Again, that has a lot to do with IT. So we've got an initiative right now, we're looking and exploring to bring broadband Wi-Fi, not Wi-Fi, but broadband fiber into the downtown district. I met with somebody actually this morning about it. So anyway, that's some of the components that we're talking about. The intent today is, again, just to get to know, we want to kind of explain what the process is. When I contacted Mr. Green, I explained to him what we wanted, and he was really, really excited about it. Mr. Green said, Donovan, you're going to be really enthused and excited about the kids that we have, and how intelligent, how forward-thinking. He said, I'm going to get you a really great group of kids that can come in. And I said, well, I need 10. And he said, I could probably give you 50 or 100 if you needed them. Because we really have great kids at this school system. So in order to make it a quaint little group, this is why you were selected, what I'm going to do here in just a moment, I'm going to let Miriam, she's got some questions here in just a second. Miriam, I made some copies of what you sent to me that I'm going to pass out. But what we're going to do is, we're going to open it up to just a little discussion. We're going to let you ask the commission some questions. We're going to let you ask me some questions if you want, just about what we're looking for. But here's kind of your assignment, is that what we want to do is, is we're just going to start the conversation going today. Understand the importance of what we are putting on your backs today, okay? You all are making decisions for this community that will last a lifetime.
With no pressure.
So your voice will be heard by their ears, and then they will instruct me. And my job is to go out as the city manager and to find grants, to, to tear buildings down and build new buildings. Your job is to be the study board to these gentlemen. They are then to make the final decision as a voice of the community, and then their job is to tell me what that they need me to do, and then my job is to use my staff and go out and do it. So you have a very important, very important part of the growth of our community, and allowing us to listen and to hear your voice and what's important to each and every one of you. So again, what your assignment will be, and I'm going to open it up for discussion, is, is to go back as a group. We want you to create a focus group, in essence. We want you to elect somebody that's going to kind of keep order in your group. And what we want you to do is, we want you to sit down and answer a few questions that Miriam has, and then we're going to let you expand it a little bit. We want you to think outside the box about understanding how our process works and being realistic with it, okay? Part of being realistic is, is that it's unrealistic to say that I, you know, we want you all to go out and to build a football stadium, you know, that would cost $100 million to do. We don't have that kind of money. Nobody in the nation right now has that kind of money. But, you know, what realistically maybe is, is that we need to improve, again, broadband internet downtown, because there's no hotspots for us to hang out. And one of the things we want to do, our generation wants to do, is that you all do plenty, the commission, you all do plenty of events, Muscle on Main, Hibbler Days, the expo center, you do great events, but that's for your group, your generation. We want to see these type of events. That's what would make us happy. We want an internet cafe. We want Wi-Fi. We want broadband. And this is where we hang out. This is who we hang out with. I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to dumb it down at all, I'm just trying to give you some examples. We want you to reach for the stars, come all the way around. And then with this focus group and with somebody at the helm, we want you to come up with these ideals that you will then come back to the commission with Miriam, and sit down and give us our list of your 5, 10, 15, whatever you think is realistic and what do you think is important, representing your age group. Does everybody understand what I'm asking? Everybody excited about it? We really are, because this is the first time that we've really been able to hear from you guys to come in and tell us what we want to do.
I just want to say one thing real quick, not to interrupt, but I was fortunate enough to be on the commission when we did our last comprehensive plan. And Donovan said, yeah, be careful, don't go too back, too big, too far, but go too big, too far. Because if you don't, if you don't reach out there, and I think Miriam's the one that told me this, you know, six, eight years ago, if you don't think way out there, you know, you never know what's going to happen six, eight years. We might come into a landfall, who knows? I mean, we come out of all kinds of money, but it's the idea, it may not, it may not go right now, but it may be a still net list somewhere that we can always go back to. So think kind of crazy if you want to, if that's, if that's what, you know.
Well, again, that's what we want to do for the next couple of minutes, is kind of open up a little discussion, and then after we open that little discussion, question and answers, then I'm going to turn it over to Miriam, and I'm going to let her kind of explain the specific questions that she has from her perspective, and then we'll kind of wrap it up, okay? Gene?
I'd like to recommend that you think outside the box, or you've heard that expression.
Do you want to be up, comment?
Oh, I got, I got a comment. Have to ask this question. Miriam said that this is for stakeholders, comprehensive plan, and that's anybody that's got interest. I can't think of anybody that would have a greater interest in this comprehensive plan than you, because you will be affected by it far longer than anybody else that's going to be talked to.
Especially me.
That's right. And especially, and especially if I'm years down the road, if you turn Sarah, you don't have a right to complain.
Well, the thing about, another good point about that is too, is that you're almost 17, 18 years old, so this is a 10-year comprehensive plan. Guess, when this thing comes to fruition, guess how old you're going to be? You're going to be the leaders of this town, in this city. So, you know, so think of it that way, too.
Well, let's kind of open it up to this group now. What questions, what input do you have for the commission? Anything from what do you all want to see, or how do you want us to proceed, or just questions in general? The four of you.
I was, I think you mentioned the, the grant that you received for recycling projects in the town. Like, well, what, what did the money go towards, I guess, specifically?
The grants that we received went to a couple of different things. It went to a cardboard bailing, backing up a little bit. Recycling has been very difficult for eastern Kentucky. The reason it's been difficult is because it's a commodity, just like the commodity that's sold on the open market. Problem is, when the economy kind of went down, the commodity, the price wasn't there to try to buy, and we have to transport it, unlike other bigger markets from point A to point B. So for example, if we, if we recycle plastic bottles, then the cost for us to actually pick them up, put them in a container, and take them to Charleston, which is where we would sell the commodity, was greater than what the bottle was worth. So we had to look at things that made sense. So cardboard, again, because it's a commodity and the price for cardboard, you can get a little bit more, it ends up, at the end of the day, paying for itself. So we went and acquired, I think it was $60,000 or $70,000, bought a cardboard bale or this now, and we, we got a building that went with it. The other thing that we got was a, we partnered with the county. We've got a good working relationship on many different levels with the county, fiscal court, and the recycling center. And down at, I think there's three locations now, the one that I use is over on the bypass, those big recycling centers that you see that sits out. We invested in those recycling centers, because again, by combining the counties and the cities' recycling goods, then we can transport them, and it makes sense, because it's not two doing the same job that one can do. So there, there are at times additional grant opportunities that open up, and we would like to expand. It's one of the things actually that we recently talked about, had, had talked about. But it was one of the things, recycling in 2005 wasn't as much of an initiative as it is in 2012. So in the 2013 comprehensive plan, it will have its place. Makes sense?
Yeah. And like something that, I mean, I've seen like in other towns and cities, that they might have recycling routes, maybe go from like neighborhood to neighborhood, things like that, where people could, you know, deposit their recycling materials and then, like just like the garbage route, kind of. So I feel like, I don't know, there may be some problems, like obstacles in getting that established, but if we could have that, that would definitely encourage recycling and probably, you know, increase the amount of, amount of recycling materials that people put out there. Because I, I know like a big problem is that no one really wants to gather up all their recycling materials at the end of the month and take it to the receptacle in a certain location. I, I think it would definitely encourage people to recycle more, if there was a route that went through.
Well, see, this is a perfect example of what we're talking about. Our generation didn't recycle. Your generation does. And that's what we need to hear more of, because it is our responsibility to help save the planet. And we've started small and taking steps to get where you're talking about, but we need to hear those type of ideals. That's, that's a very, very good point. Anybody else? What other questions or other comments that you have about the process, about anything? Just throw it out there, that's what we're here for. Y'all are not, I was told by Mr. Green, you are not a quiet group.
No, they were kind of noisy earlier, so.
I do have a question. As a teenager, if you will, in this community, there's, it seems to me that there's not a lot to do. Like, there's the movies and the bowling alley down there, and then the restaurants, of course, but it doesn't feel like there are a lot of stuff to do in town, like to hang out, if you will. So what are you guys doing? Are you guys addressing that problem, or are you guys having any ideas about that, or?
That's why you're here.
Yeah. Tell us what, tell us what you would like to see.
I don't know. I mean, you mentioned a, an internet cafe, that sounds something cool. I know a lot of coffee, or not coffee students, a lot of college students. A lot of college students.
Who end up being coffee students.
No, they'll be coffee students to that, no. Like when I talk to students who go to like UK or go to U of L, they're like, well, I'll do a lot of cramming in a coffee house or something. So maybe like, that could, that will be kind of successful if there was a coffee house or an internet cafe, because I, I like coffee personally, but that just sounds like some beautiful atmosphere.
Well, it's a, again, that's a great point. And with that, if you look down the road, I mentioned some of the slides that I showed, for example, is the new Jenny Wiley Theater.
That's exactly what I was getting ready to say.
Miriam actually serves two roles here. She is actually the president of the Jenny Wiley Drama Association. So she, I've worked with her on many different levels of, of different things, but, but one of the things that, go ahead, Jimmy.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, as soon as you said that, because we talked about the same thing, is they're going to have a, hopefully, down the road, and maybe not too far down the road. Miriam, go ahead.
Well, I think that that's a great idea, and, and, and part of what has just happened here with both of your comments, for me, is the importance of getting you guys involved. So I agree with both of you. I'm a big recycler. So, I agree with both of you. I'm a big recycler. I'm one of those people who does shlep my stuff at the end of the month to the receptacles. And I don't mind doing it, because I think it's important. But I even take my glass to Lexington, if you can believe it, because I, I don't have a place locally that I can, unless, will you guys take glass? Do you take glass in the receptacles?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'll start bringing it up here. But, and, and the whole internet cafe thing. So, what, what we need to know is that there's interest. A lot of these things have been talked about, but unless we know that there are people who really want them, then the city can't move forward. And one of the reasons that you guys don't get included, your generation doesn't get included enough, is because you don't vote. But you almost vote. And you vote with your pocketbooks, if you know what I mean by that, right? You guys spend money. And that's a really important group of spenders for any city, especially for a small city. And Pikeville is a relatively small city. It's a, it's a great city, but it, and to me, it's a great size. But we need everybody's pocketbook. So we want to make sure we capture yours as well. So if you guys are interested in something like an internet cafe, and I suspect if we asked the folks up on the Hill, they would say, oh yeah, that'd be great. But I have a question about that for you, for all of you. Where should some of these things be located? Where do you guys hang out?
I think downtown.
Downtown, okay. So if there was more stuff downtown, you guys would be downtown.
Downtown is a really good, like, if it was like up on the College Hill, we wouldn't, I mean, well, we're almost freshman in college, but the high school crowd wouldn't feel really comfortable up there.
Right.
And also, the college kids could come easily downtown. Let's just walk with, walk downtown.
Okay.
I think that he wants me to move up there, so it's easier to capture.
That's fine. Well, and, and let, let me interject on that point, because it's, that was a great question to ask. If you look at all those slides that I just showed you, in the last, again, five or six years, that's all the things that happened. All those parks, all those things that, that involve youth. But again, the ear hasn't been there typically around, around the nation to say, we think we know what you need, want. We're asking you, you tell us what you want. That's the two differences. There has been a lot of things that have happened. If you look at the dynamics of town, for some of us, it's been around a while. And you look at the complete total change, and all these millions and millions of dollars in projects. Some of them are done with private investment, some of them's done with government investment. So whatever this group sits down, and that's the kind of discussion that we want you to have with the questions that Miriam is asking you, is for you all to sit down, so that our ears aren't sitting here, taking you down a path. We want you to go down that path on your own, with your peers, and come back to us and say, here's our top 10 items. We want recycling. We want an internet cafe. We know, we, we want, you know, the, the, I'm trying to think of, the park down on, at the, at the Pikeville Pond isn't utilized, and instead, we'd really like for you to expand on, you know, selling kayaks, or putting kayaks in the water force, because we're more apt to go down and kayak than we are paddle boat. Now, again, I'm just trying to come up with something in my mind. Those are the things, not just about what you want, it's what you see, and what you would change, and how you would change it. And the Commission wants to hear your voice, because as Jimmy said a second ago, we don't want you to think too small. We want you to think small, mid, middle, and, and the beginning. Now, they like to think big, because they get to come up with the ideal, and say, here Donovan, figure it out.
Figure it out.
But it's a lot of fun. It is a lot of fun in, in how we see. But if you go to your point a moment ago about, let's say, internet cafe. In 2004 is when I took this, this Commission awarded me this position. And I live right beside the city park. And in 2004, you saw all the, what happened with the park, what it looked like before. Some of you are a little bit younger at that time, but during that time, it really wasn't a thriving place. There was nothing going on. Matter of fact, when I was growing up, it was scary to go into the park. You didn't, that's one place you didn't go. It was really, but that, the whole downtown area has changed. In 2004, we had 12 events scheduled in the park in 2004. The Commission went through this process, the comprehensive plan. And they, they put fountains in the park, they put the new play centers in the park, the rubber mulch, we moved the bathroom back, we put the shelters in the park, et cetera. Last year, there was over 380 events in the park. So see how the change, that's what can change can happen. But instead of them just saying, this is what we're going to change for you, we want you all to get together.
I hate to interrupt you.
He's lying to you. He does it all the time.
Well, now, I want you to look at what's already happened here. Now, Chris, you've already influenced the future of recycling in Pikeville, or Pikeville. Mac, you've already influenced some changes downtown with internet cafe. And you know, that's, that's how it works. Just sit down, simple talk, simple ideas, hearing from you.
We don't know unless somebody says something, you know, and shame on us for not doing this sooner, to be honest. Because, you know, I can imagine, 10 years ago, when we were doing this, what, what could have been, you know, what, what could, what could have happened that we hadn't even thought of yet, you know? So, that's why I'm excited about this.
Well, and the prime, prime example I'll give to y'all is, we, we do an event every year, the Commission sanctioned, which is the Halloween Nightmare on Main Street, which they opened up the Expo Center to all the trick or treat kids. It's a great event, because we get to dress up and have fun. But I dressed up this year, I dress up each year. I usually wear a mask, that way nobody can know who I am, because I like getting in there and having more fun.
He should wear one every day.
He does. I'll take it out. But this year, I, I showed up in my costume, and all these guys, every one of them, in our group, said, who are you? G.I. Joe? That's what they want to know. You know who I was? I was a character from Halo. Who in here knows who Halo is? These guys have no idea who Halo is. My son knows who Halo is. That's the only reason why I did it, is I tried to do something that's, that's relative. But that's, that's our point, is that we think one way, you all think another way. Hopefully, I'm getting through why you're a part of this involvement. We can sit up here all day long and make good decisions, and they have done so. The Commission's made great decisions for the community, it's grown. But it's not the decision you all want to see them make. And that's what we're trying to do, is engage you to get to that point, to create this conversation. Miriam, what other questions do you have for that?
Okay, so one of the things is that you're going to think about this and try to generate some ideas, right? Is, is, you're agreeable to doing that. And it doesn't have to be limited to you guys. You can invite some other people in. So have you done focus groups before? Do you know what I mean? So, you know, basically, you're just talking, but you want to have some kind of structure to start with. Now, you can go beyond that. So, when I was at my computer yesterday, these were some of the questions that I thought I wanted to ask you. But as we've been sitting here, I've also thought of a couple of other things. Which is, to think about this. One thing is, what do you want here in Pikeville? Or what do you think other kids your age want? Now, you're all going to have slightly different ideas, because we have some people who like Halo, who may want, in addition to an internet cafe, a place to go play video games. I don't even know what they're called. Or somebody might want laser tag. Somebody else, like me, might really yearn for an ice skating rink. I grew up ice skating every Saturday or after school. We had a bus that went from my school to the ice skating rink, and I loved it. And I miss skating. And I wish I had a place to skate. And it's the only place I think could ever get a skating rink. But, you know, so who knows? And obviously, they're not all going to necessarily happen, but it, it gives, it gives the Commission an idea about where are the interests, and what do we need to start looking at, and how to prioritize. So, you don't have to necessarily agree, you just have to get the ideas down. And, and maybe at some point, we'll get back together with you, and I'll help you order them, and think, what are the most important things? You know, maybe somebody wants, is there a whole bunch of people who want a skateboard park? Is there one up at Bob Davis?
No.
Used to be, got taken out.
Well, and again, that's, that's a prime example. We had a skateboard park up there. We didn't engage you. Some things went wrong, and ended up closing, because something, there was, there were some destruction that went on, and some.
Right. And, and that brings me to my next thing. So, one thing is the what. The next thing is the where. So, I'm really interested in knowing how you guys get around. I know a lot of kids these days have cars. I never had a car. I had to ride my bicycle. But I don't want you guys riding your bike on Route 23. That would not be a good thing. But maybe you are bike riders, and you want more places to ride your bikes. I don't know. But like, how do you get around, and where should this stuff be for you? And then, the other piece is, how do we make it accessible for you? So that's partly about the where. But how are you going to actually get there and be able to utilize it? Especially if, if some of this stuff, we want to attract kids who aren't driving yet, or who may not have access to their cars, right? So we have to think about some of that. So any creative things that you think about in those areas is what we'd be interested in. So, if you go back and you guys meet together, and maybe bring in a few other people, designate one or two, the, you know, one way to do this, and I can, I can come at some point if you want, but you guys can also do, you know, I don't need to. The, the big sheets of paper, I'm assuming that you're somebody who's going to be working with them on this. Okay. Sorry, I was late. We didn't calculate the school bus traffic properly, getting here. So, so you know, use those big flip charts and to track things. And one way is, when you get up your list of things, you can put, like, you know, everybody can, can number them in the order that they like them. You can order it in that way. And then bring it back to us, and, and we'll, we'll see what, if we want, if we have more questions for you after that.
And I'm glad you said that, because the other, this process, we want you all to understand, is yours.
Yeah.
The engagement will be with the Commission and Miriam. This process is yours. Don't, however, you don't have to be all inclusive just to your group. If you want to create a questionnaire, that you want to circulate amongst your lower classmates, even, you know, go to the seventh, eighth freshmen, feel free to do that, too. We want a good understand, a decision you make. Ends up in this, this is the city's comprehensive plan.
That's just the summary, I think, isn't it?
It's a lot bigger.
Yeah, the real plan is like this big.
But this is the plan. This is, in essence, this is my go-to book, okay? These are the things that, when I sit down and think, what am I doing tomorrow, I pull this out and say, well, the Commission wanted me to, hey, and I got to figure out how to go out there and get it done. And they challenged me in a Commission meeting, and said, well, where are you at in this, and why aren't we here on this? So, if it's not in this book, I might address it, but then I might not, because there's a lot of stuff in this book. So, those ideals, those thoughts, those processes are very, very important to this plan. And I'm just, y'all, again, I should be very honored that you're, been selected. We're thankful. The Commission is that you're agreeing to participate, because it is a very important process. They take very, very seriously. And we're glad to have Miriam, because she's done a wonderful job with her last plan. So, with that said, what other, we've got about 10 more minutes that we have to be finished by. But what other, any other questions or any other concerns about the process?
You said, reach for the stars and think out of the box. Well, this might just be a little bit too crazy for you guys to take on, but it's one thing, if I can think back on, if somebody's told me, it's like, man, I wish we really had this, or man, it'd be really cool if we had this. Now, hold your breath for a second. Ready, ready? A shopping mall or a shopping complex. Because everybody I've talked to, it's like, man, it stinks. Actually, I saw on Twitter the other day, Eastern Kentucky Problems, having to drive two, two hours to the nearest shopping mall. Now, that, that's a, I know that.
You're talking about an indoor mall.
Yes, yes. Or maybe even some kind of shopping complex, but I don't know where you guys would put it, and then.
They're already out.
Oh, well then, they're mine.
Come on, man.
He went pretty fast. But you were talking about reach for the stars. You can ask Ms. Huffman, if we were your all shoes, and somebody would have said, because we graduated together, somebody said, wouldn't it be neat to have a place to have a concert? And in Pikeville, they're by just laughing, so there's no way that could ever happen. See what you got?
This is, if you look at this, this is, if you're traveling down, this is Walmart. This is the backside of Walmart, called Thompson's Road. The post office currently sits right here. What's getting ready to happen, the Commission just signed this deal at the first of October, the first part of, probably around April, they'll start construction. Post office will be demolished. We'll go over to this new area right here, this is the post office, which is currently where the fire station is. But this is a 7,000, all these are retail stores. This box, this box, this box, this box, this box, all the way around. You can see Texas Roadhouse currently sits here. So this is a new shopping center that will take place and start being built this spring.
And my understanding is, what's different about it is that it, it has some bigger name anchor stores, right? It has some places that now we all drive to get to.
Well, and this, it's this kind of hard slide to see from where you're at, and I think you just got a copy. But if you look at the bottom, down here, this is what, see this little configuration right here, it's kind of strange shape? If you take that, whoops, wrong one. That's what this right here is, down here. If you notice, there are stores along the wall. These are all glass door doors that you walk into the stores with. And these will be, again, unfortunately, I can't tell you who all the stores are, because we're under a confidentiality agreement. What happens is, is you get a store that comes in, and they don't, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'll use an example. Let's say you have a Hobby Lobby come in, okay? This is a major craft store.
You have a major craft store.
Okay?
But that is a major craft store up there.
But just think for all those projects, right? All those school projects, wouldn't it be easy to have Hobby Lobbies?
Well, I, I just use that, because this configuration will change. And let's say you have, you know, this craft store come in, then, you know, what that craft store is doing is not only creating jobs, it's creating opportunity. But, whoops, I keep going the wrong, see their technology? That's your all spin. I'm trying to figure out how to make this thing work.
I'm pretty impressed with this wireless thing.
But if you look at this, these are apartments overhead. So, the thought process was, and what the Commission went down the road, said, okay, we need middle-income housing, or we need people, the workerian jobs in the new hope, or the new hostel that's being built, you got to have places for these people to live. You got to have places for the students to live. So, what we did was, we worked with the developer, and they're building apartments overhead. So down there by Walmart, you've got students, or really anybody that can come in, and they can live where they eat, where they shop. Nice sidewalks, a boat ramp, maybe a park. So that's another need that's being filled, that we fought outside the box office. So, this is just, again, just one example of, to your point, a retail complex, because I agree with you, it's one of the components that was missing, those good restaurants, the good places to shop. You know, kids want to go and spend their money on nice clothing. Makes sense? Again, just giving you examples. This is one of our examples, but think about that in your terms.
There's another thing about this that I just want to say real quick, that's kind of interesting, because this is called mixed use for land, right? So, it's got multiple uses. There's retail, there's living, there's eating, service, and all of that. And lots of times, when you look at the way communities used to be planned, certainly when I was a kid, there was one neighborhood that was for houses, there was one neighborhood that was for shops, there was one neighborhood that was for business, and you had to get from one to the other, right? But one of the things that we know about people when they're younger, young adults and college students, is that they need to live and work and shop all in the same basic area. And so, we, so mixed use is, is more attractive to young adults and to college students. And so that's something that's going to be really important. And that looks more like, oh yeah. I mean, I, I would imagine that if I were 20-something again, that would be a place that I would like, I would think, oh yeah, that'd be a cool place to live, as opposed to the ranch house that I grew up in, with the yard, next to the ranch house with the yard, et cetera, right? That's not what we're looking for when we're, we're making decisions about where to live when we're young. And what happens is, where you end up in your twenties is very often where you end up staying. I'm a great example. I moved to Kentucky for a year, I thought, in my mid twenties, and I basically never left. So, now, 27 years later, here I am. Right? Never thought I was going to stay. But you find, where, that's where you put down your roots sometimes, or, you know, so, and, and where you have them.
Here's something. Wouldn't be surprised if there's not one person in this room that won't be living in one of those apartments going to U-Pike.
That's right.
Because they're going to start in, in April, and be done in about a year, so it's going to work out pretty good timing.
Great for you guys, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I mean, concerning U-Pike, like, I know, like, you just recently built the new osteopathic medical school. And I think it's like, my understanding is that they only offer primary care residency, I mean, or they're only like, offer primary care training. So maybe, like, adding more programs to that, different specialties, so that if I, like, let's say I wanted to become a doctor and specialize in pulmonology, I would have to go probably out of the town to do that. So, maybe adding, like, adding more building screens, or more, you know, specialty programs.
Well, see, that's a perfect example, shooting for the stars, and giving us the voice, be able to go back. Because a lot of the comprehensive plan, if you look at it, isn't just things that the Commission controls. It's things that other business leaders in our community control. So, so Governor Patton, or President Patton now, hearing comments like that, may understand that a great percentage of the Pikeville high school students who want to pursue maybe a medical degree, the reason they're not pursuing at U-Pike is because it's too limited. So it gives her something to, again, to put into the report.
She was right. Because she'll bring that up, I guarantee.
That they may not, you know, for one reason or the other, there might be reasons that they can't do it. They, you know, the, because there is some components in there, a lot of things that's, the few things that I told you that we had completed in the comprehensive plan is because there was either laws, restrictions, regulations, that want to allow us to do so. You know, the Medical Association has to give you a certificate for you to expand it in this field, and, or they don't have the adequate space, you know, they don't have the equipment. I mean, there might be rationality, but at least give us the plan to start.
I have a general question that I'd like you guys to consider when you're in your focus group, because I thought of it when you brought up the recycling issue. Which is that I'm wondering if sometimes you guys feel like you don't know some of what's happening? Like, you are interested in recycling, and the high school was the impetus to start this recycling grant, and then the grant was awarded, but you guys didn't get the feedback to know where it had actually been spent. And so, if you have questions about that, this is a good place to ask those questions, but also, ideas. but also, ideas that you have about how the city and government entities can get that information to you. You know, I'm not sure that you all read the newspaper, because that's, I don't know that that's your mode of communication. But at least some, one person's on Twitter, I imagine more of you. And I do a little bit of Twitter, I'm not a Facebook person, but, you know, whatever, so ideas that you have about how information can be transmitted, so that you know what's happening. Especially, we want to make sure that for this process, you get the feedback on what your, where your, what happens to your ideas, and how they show up again. So all of that is really an important piece of this as well.
Our wifi's not working as well.
You know, it could be as simple as a link that you all can use on our webpage, or vice versa, that information can be shared.
Yeah, or a connection between school and, I don't know, but whatever you guys think is, would work.
Well, I was trying to get there any quicker, I don't know where you'd be there.
Do you wanna sit down?
No, I'll, I'll, well, I'll show you here in just a minute, we're talking, cause we have a wrap up, I know we, we promised Mr. Green that we would be an hour or under, and we're approaching that in about three minutes. We wanna get you all out of here too, to enjoy your evening. But the city does have, to that point, you know, the city has a Facebook page for the city, a Twitter's a Facebook page, we have a city website that has all the minutes from every meeting that takes place, we have all the bills that are paid, we have all the ordinances.
For your sleepless nights. For your leisure reading on your sleepless nights.
But for, it's important, because when I first came to the city, again, showing the generational gap is, is that all that information that I just mentioned used to be stored on discs and on the hard drive downstairs. So if any of y'all wanted to really know, at two o'clock in the morning, you know, is my dog allowed outside and off a leash, is there a leash law? Or, you know, the dog next door's barking, I can't go to sleep? You all research information by getting up at two o'clock in the morning, flipping your computer on and doing searches. We tend to go to a book and try to sit there and find the orders. So, we have made generational, we've closed that gap by looking at what the trend or what is out there.